Good evening and welcome. Tonight is Monday, April 8th, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the Minnetoka City Council. I will call this meeting to order and ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. England, would you please call roll, please?
Foster Bolton?
Here.
Shaq?
Here.
Wilburn?
Here.
Calvert?
Here.
Remaley?
Here.
Coakley?
Here.
We're some.
Here. Next item is approval of the agenda, and we have an addendum tonight, so Mr. Funk.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Two items for your consideration for tonight's addenda. The first is related to Item 10B, which is the Strategic Profile Quarter One Report. Including your packet is a detailed summary of the first quarter activities. What this addenda does is provide a progress report. We had two items in that report that were inadvertently missed, and so those have been inserted into the revised document. The second item relates to 14A, which is items concerning Greco, Minnetoka at 15407 and 15409, Wasdeta Boulevard. Greco Properties has requested that its project be pulled from tonight's City Council agenda. The company needs additional time to consider the affordable housing requirement and qualifications for the assisted living and memory care components of the proposed project. There is a letter that's included in that addenda, and then with that, Mayor, I turn it back over to you for your consideration of tonight's full agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Council, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the agenda as amended.
And is there a second? Councilwoman Remaley?
I'll second that.
All right. We've got a motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilwoman Remaley. Ms. England, please call roll.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. And Mr. Funk, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I should have also, I'm a little remiss in not also mentioning with Item 14A, even though it's been pulled from this evening's agenda, if we do have residents in the audience, we do certainly want to note that it will not be discussed this evening. Staff did inform the neighborhood through all of our different social media outlets, emails, and so we tried to inform the neighborhood as quickly as possible, but it could be possible that some folks didn't see that notice as well.
All right, very good. So 14A is not on the agenda tonight, so if you're here for that, it will come back another time, perhaps. Very good. So next item, Item 5, is approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes, and that is the March 25th, 2024, regular meeting minutes. And Councilmember Shaq?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the March 25th, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
And is there a second? Councilmember Calvert?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Shaq and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Ms. England, please call roll.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
We're some.
Abstain, and I want to thank Councilmember Calvert for covering for me that evening when I was a little bit under the weather, so thank you, Councilmember Calvert. Special matters is the next item, and we have none of those tonight. Item 7 is reports from city manager and council members, so Mr. Funk.
Again, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. A couple of things for you this evening. First is, it's that time of year for our annual tree sale. The tree sale lottery is now open and will run through April 26th. So if anyone is interested in our annual tree sale, we have a lot more information on our website, so please go visit our website and get signed up. Second thing is to mention that street sweeping will also begin, that is, starting on Monday, April 8th, which is today. It generally takes us about five weeks to complete that task, so residents and businesses can see our sweeping crews out in about the next five weeks. Also, then I want to mention that our fire department is hosting a sensory-friendly open house, and that's going to be taking place on Saturday, April 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Moving on, I want to note that absentee voting starts Friday, April 12th, for the primary special election for the Hennepin County Commissioner. So absentee, again, voting starts this Friday, and it'll run through Election Day, which is April 23rd. Water Main, April 20th, is that correct? April 23rd? April 23rd, thank you.
30th.
30th, my apologies. So it runs through Friday, April 12th, through Election Day, which is April 30th. My apologies for the inaccurate date. And then also, Water Main flushing starts on Monday, April 15th, and that runs through May 9th. That is daily activity, Monday through Friday. We start early, which is around 5:30 a.m., and run through 5:00 p.m. So many of my announcements tonight, got to reinforce that spring is here, perhaps, and so we're anxious to see the leaves start to bloom, and certainly with that comes some of the activity I mentioned. And then last, we do have with our upcoming council meetings, next Monday is a study session. We do have two items. One is the facility study, the second is the zoning diagnostic report, and then the meeting after that will be Monday, April 22nd. And looking forward to that conversation, because after a year of public engagement and conversation, and a lot of work by staff or consultants and engaged residents, the climate action and adaptation plan is nearly complete and will be presented here in two weeks. So with that, Mayor and Council, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Councilmembers, any reports that you would like to make? Anyone? All right, we'll keep things moving. So Item 8 is citizens wishing to discuss matters not on the agenda, so this is an open-mic opportunity, and if there is anything that you would like to share with the council, please come forward, state your name and address, and tell us what you want us to know. I can tell you that no action will be taken on whatever you report to us, but we will turn it over to staff for further investigation, and they will report back to the council. So with that, is there anyone who would like, anyone in the audience, or online, I think we do have an individual on the phone who would like to make a report, but first I'll ask, anyone in the audience like to make a report on this item? And then I'll turn to our IT staff and see, I believe we have an individual on the phone who would like to make a comment to the council. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
All right, and so I would say to the resident, please state your name and address and tell us what you would like us to know.
With that, is there anyone who would like, anyone in the audience, or online, I think we do have an individual on the phone who would like to make a report, but first I'll ask, anyone in the audience like to make a report on this item? And then I'll turn to our IT staff and see, I believe we have an individual on the phone who would like to make a comment to the council. Is that correct?
No, I think your TV is on. I think we're getting a feedback from your YouTube.
Is it working now?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Hello? Is it working now?
Yes. It is working, so go ahead.
And Mayor, just.
I'm muted, so I'm not sure if you guys can hear me. I'm muted.
We can hear you. Yes, we can. We can give you a thumbs up?
Noel, I think your TV is on. I think we're getting feedback from you.
Is it working now?
Yes.
Noel, we can hear you if you can hear this.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, please listen just through your phone and not through your computer YouTube feed.
All right, perfect. Just let me know if you guys can't, if it cuts out. So my name's Noel Kepler. I am the Senior EHS Specialist for Abbott Laboratories. I am the Senior Safety Specialist for the four buildings that we have in Minnetoka. We have noticed throughout the years off of Minnetoka Industrial Road, lots of cars speeding past, a few concerning instances where we had our employees who are pedestrians almost getting hit by cars. Most concerning happened a few weeks ago where it was a car speeding and it ended up swerving. We've encouraged employees to wear high-visibility vests when they walk between the buildings, but that has not seemed to help with either the speeding cars and the low visibility in the area. So our concerns are mainly with the speed and the low visibility at night, because we do have employees walking between the buildings throughout the day and at night. So just wanted to bring up our concerns to see if someone could take a look at that and provide more visibility for the area.
Well, thank you, Ms. Kepler. We will share this, obviously, with staff and with our police department. I think that there are things that, obviously, we have speeding concerns. There are things that the police department does to help to mitigate those, so thank you for making us aware of your concern, and we will make sure that we look into it. All right, is there anyone else who has anything from the audience that they would like to report? All right, seeing no one?
Not for this item.
All right. Thank you. So we will move on to the next item, which is bids and purchases, and we have none of those tonight. So that brings us to Item 10, which is the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is items that are typically routine, and I will read them into the record. If anyone would like to pull an item, please indicate that, anyone either on the council or in the audience, and we will pull. If you want it pulled, we will pull it and consider it separately. Otherwise, we will vote on these in one action. So we've only got a couple of consent agenda items tonight. 10A is a conditional use permit for a 1,440-square-foot accessory structure at 139, is that 9 or 8? 907 McGinty Road East. I should put my glasses on, pardon me. 13907. And Item 10B is the Strategic Profile Quarter One Report. So is there a motion? Councilmember Shaq?
Mayor, if I could just, I don't need to pull an item, but I would like to make a comment about 10A if that's.
Very good.
Thank you. So, you know, I received the notes from the neighbors regarding concerns about this accessory structure, the size, the proximity to the road, and some of the concerns about the use, and I just want to say, you know, some of the issues were well explained in the staff report as far as the setbacks go. Those are met, and we have some very specific ordinances that relate to operation of business on residential property and related to noise, and I just want to let the neighbors know that we take those things seriously, so both for these property owners, that they be sensitive to the concerns of their neighbors and be good neighbors, and also to the neighboring residents with the concerns, that if there's something that comes up that they believe is a violation of the ordinance, so please reach out to me or to staff, and we can certainly get that addressed. Otherwise, Mayor, I would move approval of consent agenda items 10A and 10B.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaq. Are there any other comments? Or Councilmember Calvert?
I'll just second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Shaq and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Ms. England, please call roll.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. Item 11 is consent agenda items requiring five votes, and we have none of those tonight. So that brings us to Item 12, which is Introduction of Ordinances, and we have four different introductions, and each of them will be considered separately. So Item 12A is an ordinance amending Section 845.030 of the Minnetoka City Code relating to maintenance standards for lawns and managed natural landscapes. And Ms. Wischnack, I believe you have that report.
I do. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. This is just a short report for you. I would put this in the probably bucket of some housekeeping for the ordinance, and it's really to talk about lawn maintenance, and in that, we also talk about managed natural landscapes. So there are some language changes that clarify the ecological benefits of natural landscapes. That's in the preamble of the ordinance, just changed slightly some of the wording. Also, it notes that the city accepts both turf and managed natural landscaping as acceptable treatments for a property. Also, there's new definitions for establishment periods. There's managed natural landscapes, ornamental plants, rain gardens, and turf lawn that are defined in the ordinance. And then this is a little bit different than we're used to. We used to have an ordinance requiring 10 inches maximum for your lawn height. The state has adopted something recently that only allows eight inches, so that's a new one for the city. And then we also added some maintenance standards for natural landscapes. And I know you'll ask me what other cities have four inches, so I have a list. St. Louis Park, maximum six inches. Eden Prairie and Hopkins have 10, so they're going to be changing their ordinances. And then Plymouth and Maple Grove had eight, so just for reference, it's a little bit different in each city, but we are required to change our ordinance. You did, oop, sorry, go back. You did discuss this at your, or this is your first discussion. This is an introduction of the ordinance. You'll come back and discuss it again, so if you have any questions or want clarifications for the ordinance, we're happy to hear those tonight, and then we'll bring it back for a final adoption at a future meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Wischnack. So, Council, this is an introduction. We will have further consideration of this down the line, but are there any things that we would like staff to answer between now and the time it comes back? Any questions or concerns or issues with this proposed change? Is there anything? All right, then, a motion to introduce would be appropriate. Councilmember Wilburn?
I move introduction of the lawn and managed natural landscapes ordinance.
And Councilmember Calvert?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Wilburn and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Ms. England, please call roll.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. Item 12B is an ordinance amending Section 835.015 subdivision 7 of the Minnetoka City Code relating to storage of waste containers. Ms. Wischnack, you get to work on all the fun ones tonight.
I know, exciting ordinances. I do have a slew of them tonight. We do have a follow-up to the discussion. I have to go to the right slide here. Here we go. You had a discussion in October of 2023, and at that session, there was lots of discussion, but I'm trying to kind of just whittle it down to the main issue, and you talked about your preference from keeping the waste containers out of view, but at the very least, that they be located in the side yard area for storage. I put the current language for you on the bullet, and maybe it's even easier if I show you the actual struck-out version. So the proposed language basically would add, except on the day of collection, waste containers, and we kind of consolidated all types of waste containers, no matter what they're for, for residential dwellings be located, so that they're not visible from adjacent streets or properties. Took this out-of-public-view language out of there that we were struggling with. Or at a minimum, located behind the front building line of the dwelling. Again, this is an introduction of the language. We will go ahead and post this on Minnetoka Matters for feedback for a period of time after you introduce it, and then we'll come back to you with not only that feedback, we'll get any questions you have answered in the interim. So, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Wischnack. Council, any questions you have for staff on this item regarding storage of waste containers? Councilmember Wilburn?
Just really quick. So I had a discussion with the city manager this afternoon, and I had a suggestion on the wording, so do I just wait?
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So I was, in my neighborhood at least, and I think of a lot of places, people put their containers out the night before, and so I was wondering if we could change the wording from, on the day of, to allow people to put their containers out in the afternoon before.
Got it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Wilburn. Other comments? I'll just add, I thought Councilmember Wilburn's suggestion made good sense, and I mean, I know that in my neighborhood, they go out the night before, too, so maybe in the 24 hours or whatever, you know, there's, I'm confident that our staff can come up with the terminology that delivers on what we're hoping to achieve. Great. All right, with that, is there a motion? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I make the motion to introduce the ordinance amending Section 835.015 subdivision 7 relating to storage of waste containers.
Very good. And a second, Councilwoman Remaley?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second the motion.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilwoman Remaley. Ms. England, please call roll.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. And another introduction, 12C, is an ordinance amending Minnetoka City Code Section 930.030 subdivision 6 relating to overnight parking restrictions. And once again, Ms. Wischnack.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. We did have a similar, or the same night, we had the discussion about waste containers. We talked about parking. At that meeting, we talked about both on-street parking and off-street parking, if you recall. In the council discussion, you chose to only address the on-street parking, so the discussion really was about having some provision for overnight parking, and that ended up being for the summer months. So from April 30th to November 1st was the way in which the ordinance was drafted, and basically that vehicles, it's actually the opposite in the ordinance. During the months of November through April, a vehicle must not park on a public street between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., and a vehicle must not be parked there any longer than six hours, which is in the ordinance today. This subdivision does not apply to vehicles in compliance with permits issued under that other section. There are certain areas of the city that have a permit. Willoughby Way is an example of that, where they have permitted on-street parking through the police department. Similarly, this issue would be posted on Minnetoka Matters for a period of time, get some public feedback. We also had a community survey question, I'm not sure on this one, but for sure on the waste container, we had a community survey question. So both those issues will be back before you when we're complete with that public input. Mayor, it's back to you. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wischnack. Council, any questions or items that you'd like to be sure are looked into? Councilmember Coakley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to know, you said a period of time. How long usually do we post on that?
For Minnetoka Matters. Mayor and Councilmember Coakley, I would say, usually I like to post things for at least three weeks. That usually gets people aware of it. We post it, have people provide feedback. Usually, we'll give an email push to all of our subscribers, which is over 20,000 people, so hopefully that gets people's attention. So three weeks is a normal timeframe. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Remaley?
Thank you, Mayor. I was curious or would like to understand what is the reasoning behind the six-hour limitation for continuous parking on-street?
Ms. Wischnack?
I have lots of help on this matter. We have the police department here, I think he's still here, thank you, as well as Mr. Manchester from Public Works. So there, you know, I think over the years, it probably had a lot to do with plowing and winter maintenance, but there's also been periods of time where people like to park large vehicles, maybe a trailer or a tractor-trailer even, where they sit there for a period of time. So I know that's been sometimes a problem, and they are ticketed for that long period of staying on the street, so I think that's where it comes from. I'm not sure if you have anything else.
Deputy Chief?
Not a whole lot to offer to that. What I can tell you currently is that the enforcement of that six-hour time period is very difficult for us. We have, it's not something that we typically are enforcing, to be honest with you. I think speaking to what Ms. Wischnack said is just, we've seen some instances where they're not parking overnight, but then move the vehicles to the street during the daytime, so just having something to prevent the long-term storage of vehicles on the street is kind of the objective of that, but it's not commonly enforced.
Councilmember Coakley?
I just wanted to make a comment about what Councilmember Remaley just asked about. I know that in the report, it talked about that in the cities, suburban areas typically, I guess, folks don't like parking on the streets, but it's usually a city thing, like that happens in the city versus suburban areas. And then in addition, been my experience where my daughter has gotten several tickets in the city of Minnetoka for parking overnight on the streets, and so it was like a big concern to me that just a car can't park on the street, so I think that's, yeah, that's kind of important to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, is there anything else that, again, this is an introduction, and we will have another shot at this, but is there anything in particular that you would like to know or you would like staff to look into prior to this coming back to us at a future meeting? Councilmember Shaq?
Thank you, Mayor. Not to make anything more complicated, but I guess it does kind of occur to me that if we are going to provide for overnights, that maybe the six hours is too short, and we should contemplate that maybe being eight. I mean, I know, I think the trailer issue is addressed in a different part of the ordinance, and so we don't have, because that's obviously a concern as well, but that wouldn't be a concern here. I mean, something to think about as we bring this back.
We can, Mayor. Thank you.
And we are, we will be getting input from Minnetoka Matters, and people are asked to weigh in, because, I mean, this is one of those things that some people like the idea of being able to park on the street for longer periods of time, and some people don't, and we're going to hear from both. And so I think, you know, that's part of the process. We want to hear from people so that we can have an ordinance that reflects what is really best for the city of Minnetoka. So I think that's TBD. It's a work-in-process, and that's why we have, that's why we're introducing the ordinance and providing opportunity for further input. So if there's nothing else from Council, if a motion would be great. Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to introduce the ordinance relating to overnight parking restrictions.
Councilmember Coakley?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilmember Coakley. Ms. England, please call roll.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. Item 12D is an ordinance rezoning the properties located at 3521 Baker Road and 3522 Elm Lane and 2. and two unassigned addresses from the R1 low-density residential district to planned unit development district. And again, this is an introduction. Mr. Gordon?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I'll give a quick overview on the project here. This is the subject properties that the mayor noted. It's included as a number of properties that are owned by the Mills Church on the block here, Baker to Elm and Minnetoka Drive down to Inverness Road. There's only one property on this block that isn't owned by the Mills Church. So the properties in red are the subject properties considered for the rezoning. That's the area that's kind of referred to as the apple orchard area along Baker Road, the parking lot to the east, and then there's a single-family lot on the Elm roadside. So it's essentially the south half of the properties that are owned by Mills Church. So the Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity, on behalf of the church, has provided applications to the city for the construction of five twin home buildings. So that's 10 housing units total, two in each of the five buildings. They sit along Inverness and Baker Road and along Elm. The street, street forensics there are for just the visual appearance. The access would come from a common access road on the Inverness roadside for the four buildings on the southeast, southwest corner of the site, and then the Elm lot would have its own access as well. So this is generally the proposed application. There are four applications that comprise the project. The comprehensive plan amendment from low-density to medium-density, that's needed because the project density is above four units an acre. Rezoning from R1 to planned unit development. Then there are customary site and building plan review for anything that's not single-family development. And then a preliminary plat for the project. So all of those are the land use applications. We also have a request for affordable housing funding, we'll talk about a little bit later, just in terms of the process for the project as well. Okay, a little bit about zoning and comp plan. We don't see a ton of rezone and comp plan amendments together. Every once in a while, we'll have one, but they're usually one or the other. I think the most, the most recent one would have been the Greco Project tonight that was pulled from the agenda. But along highway corridors in our Opus and Ridgedale areas, they're more common. They're less common in areas not around a commercial area in Minnetoka. So a little bit of background, the zoning for the property I noted was R1, and that is the same for essentially the entire block here. So everything on the block and around it is R1. The comprehensive plan guides the properties in question. Similarly, in density, low-density residential and R1 are compatible with each other. And so when we have something guided for low-density, it's commonly guided R1 in Minnetoka. We have other zoning districts that also align with the comp plan density of low-density residential, but the most common one is R1. The church property to the north, and then the Mills, I'm sorry, the village hall is also guided differently. That's institutional guidance in our comprehensive plan. R1 zoning aligns with institutional guidance, so it's a common thing as well. A little bit of background, just again, on comprehensive plan and zoning. When we have our comprehensive plan in place, that's really giving the land use guidance its framework. So where do we want housing? Where do we want commercial? Where do we want employment uses, things like that? Where do we have mixed uses? Our comp plan specifies areas that that's appropriate in Minnetoka. The zoning needs to follow the comp plan. So that high-level policy framework that the comprehensive plan provides is then implemented through the zoning. So a number of things happen with zoning, not just in terms of location and use, but also a lot of the standards by which development has to happen. How far are the setbacks from rows and other properties? How tall are the buildings? Things with, you know, tree ordinance, that falls into zoning as well. So the zoning implements the comprehensive plan, and again, we're changing both of these for this particular application. The planned unit development district being requested is a little bit different than our other zoning districts. So we have residential districts, commercial districts, industrial districts. The planned unit development district doesn't have those specific, what we call bulk standards. So, you know, setbacks, height, things, floor area ratios, they don't, it does not have a table that says, these are the minimums for this particular district, for this particular property. It's by application, by what the applicant wishes for the property, and by what you, as the council, will approve for the property. So it's a little bit of a, what do we, what do we want for this property? What's in the best interest of the community? So the zoning, under PUD, has some flexibility, different than other zoning districts. It also has a much higher level of public interest in it as well, in that you have to qualify the planned unit development district by meeting one of six specified areas of public benefit, or a seventh one that could be different than those six that are listed in the code. So it has a very high level of standard for development. So in this case, again, the applicant is requesting rezoning to PUD. It has, like the zoning expectations, I would say the planned unit development really requires a development plan that the city wants to be approved to be very specific for a property. So unlike B2 zoning, where we don't have a lot of guarantee about what that building really is, or the uses that are in it, because there's a lot of uses that turn over in a business use, PUD can be very specific about all of that. So that's, that's a little bit of the benefit for the flexibility that other districts don't have. Okay, that's, that's a lot about PUD. Just kind of matching up zoning here, just to kind of get your head around densities. So in our comprehensive plan, we kind of have three different density levels. Low density is up to four units an acre. Medium density is four to 12, and high density is 12 up to 100 or more. And then, again, kind of to implement the comp plan, the zoning districts have to have to have a compatibility from a density standpoint and a use standpoint. So on the right-hand side of the chart, all of the districts in the zoning code that are, that are aligned with low-density are listed, so R1, R2, R3, PUD. Again, this application is going to fall in this medium density. It's above four units an acre. So any of these three densities would be appropriate, R3, R4, PUD. So just to help you frame those. We have a typology chart. We use this kind of commonly with rezoning, so typical types of buildings within each of those different density ranges. Low-density, again, mostly is a single-family detached type product. Twin homes, duplexes do fit in this density range at times when they meet those density guidances. Medium-density is usually an attached product that's more than two usually. It's usually like a four-unit project or more. And then high-density is typically just apartments. So again, just to kind of reiterate here, for this evening, we're introducing the ordinance for the rezoning. And again, this is rezoning from the R1 to PUD for those properties. And then the comp plan would come along with that as well, from low-density to medium-density. So with, with that, I'll just get into our recommendation for this evening, and then I've got one more slide after this one, if I can hold you for one more minute. So again, we're going to ask you to introduce the ordinance to rezone the properties from R1 to planned unit development district. Refer it along to the Planning Commission for their review. And along with that, any comments that you have, that you want the Planning Commission to study as a part of their review. And then lastly, the notification area shown on the screen here. If there's any changes you want to that, we can, we can, we've already mailed out postcards. The website is obviously active. If we want to send broader notice, we can do that. This is the notice area that we've been using for the past two years for, for discussions. So if we want to make changes, we can do that as well. Lastly, kind of where we are in the process here, we had kind of five meetings that were identified. We had the neighborhood open house last month. We're here this evening at the introduction. Next week, or I'm sorry, this week already, we'll be at EDAC for the financing request for the housing. And then we'll be back next week for Planning Commission's public hearing on the application. And then back to you first of May, on the 6th, for the city council action on it. And I kind of skipped over Julie's.
No, no, that's fine. I'll just explain.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just explain on the affordable housing aspect. So council is aware, anytime we have an affordable housing request that asks for funding, that goes to the Economic Development Advisory Commission. That is happening on Thursday night. That packet is already produced. Just a note on the time for that meeting, it's 6:00 p.m., not 6:30. So it starts a half an hour earlier than the other meeting. So anybody who wants to come to that, it is live streamed, so people can participate from home or in person. So either way, we will be available at that meeting. The main public hearing, though, on the project itself, not the funding, that's the Thursday, the 18th. So if you want to talk about the project itself and the aspects of how it's planned and zoned and all of that, that happens on the 18th. Financial considerations this Thursday on the 11th.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
And just one more item. For public comments, the project page is the place we'd like to point people to provide public comments. Those public comments that come through the website, we receive, will include those in the Planning Commission packet that'll go out on Friday. They'll get those comments for review. The same comments that were provided to the Planning Commission will also be provided at the council. So anything received through the website, we'll provide with the public, public hearing material. So I just wanted to make that clear to everyone. So, thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gordon and Ms. Wishnak. So we'll bring this back to council. I think the slide that's up right now is helpful because it, because it lays out the whole process from where we are now to when the council will consider this project and make any recommendations or make a decision. And, you know, again, public engagement is welcomed. The, the formal public hearing on this item will be at the Planning Commission meeting on April 18th. This is an introduction tonight. We don't take public comment on introductions, and so there will be no public comment on this issue tonight. But there will be an opportunity for a public hearing on April 18th, and we encourage people to be involved and to show up for that. And then similarly, if, depending on what the Planning Commission recommends, if it were to come forward to the city council, the tentative, the likely meeting date is May 6th, and there will be opportunity at that meeting for public comment as well. So, and if that meeting date changes, whenever the council considers that, there will be opportunity for, for residents to comment on whatever condition the project is in at that time, there will be opportunity for, for public comment. So tonight, we, we are not making any decisions other than to introduce this project and refer to the Planning Commission for their consideration. This is a normal part of the process. And, you know, whatever we were to do tonight, which I expect we will recommend that it go, that it go to the Planning Commission, this is, this is a necessary step, but it's not a decisive step. This can, nothing is being decided tonight other than to move it forward in the process. So I don't know if you have anything to add to that. Otherwise, counsel, your, your comments and your thoughts on introducing this item and moving it forward to the Planning Commission. Councilwoman Coakley?
I just have a question, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask this question, or if I should wait, but I had a question in regards to, it doesn't really relate to zoning, but like if this project was to be approved, would, will there be any type of funding to assist with like repair, for long-term repair for the affordable housing, if it was approved? And I don't know if this is appropriate time, but just want to ask that question.
Mayor, if I may.
Ms. Wishnak?
Thank you. Councilmember Coakley, I can bring your question with us to our discussion at the EDAC and talk about the repair program.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Councilmember, Councilmember Foster Bolton?
So on page three, it says two units are being added. And to make it, to change the zoning, right? Page three of the...
Staff report.
Yeah. And my question was, so those two units, exactly how much acreage does that take up? Do you know what I mean? Does that make sense?
I'm going to kind of walk through this a little bit, maybe.
Sorry.
Be clear on which part of it. Are you speaking to the east side?
So in order for it to change from, you know, R1 to R2, it has to, you have to have certain, more units per acreage, right?
Oh, yeah.
And so in order for that change to be made, I mean, this 4-1, how much is .1? I mean, what does that really translate into something I can understand? I really don't.
Yeah. Mayor and Councilmember Bolton, we'll go through that in our staff report for the Planning Commission about what, what all the metrics are. We've not prepared any metrics with the staff report yet, but it's over by, yeah, a little bit.
Okay. And then I have another question.
Yes, go ahead.
I still don't really get planned unit development designation. Like, I mean, so like it said, mixed, mixed use of land beyond traditional use. And maybe this is something we can talk about more later too, but like, just even, like the design, and we have more like responsibility toward the public, right? If it's a planned unit development, it's sort of, like, what does that mean, really? Like, we're what, like, we're serving the public more, or, I mean, I don't get that either.
I was going to attempt to answer this, Mr. Gordon.
Ms. Wishnak?
Thank you. I think that planning unit development, I think, is a, maybe a difficult concept to understand, and I think, maybe we'll write more about this in the report too, for the Planning Commission, but there definitely is a set of standards that you need to meet, and some of it is about the public good of what the planning development. And again, it's its own zoning district. It's not like, it doesn't have a zoning district. PUD is a zoning district, so I want to make that clear. But the easiest way to understand it too, I think, is, let's just say you have a lot of trees on a site, and you want to design around the trees, and you can't meet the setbacks because you're trying to save the trees, and the trees are the bigger public benefit, according to the council or whoever is talking about the project. So I think that's a good example of a public benefit, and then the reduction setback is so that you can save those trees. That's a pretty simplistic.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I need.
Okay, all right. So, I mean, that's an example of where you would, might use a PUD.
Okay. Thanks.
Good. Counsel, any, any other questions? Councilwoman Coakley?
I got one more question. So in this, in this district area, it's like different type of zoning. It seems like there are several different types of zoning in this particular space. Is that what I'm hearing? Is that what you described?
Mayor and Councilmember Coakley, no. It's actually, there are very few zoning districts in the neighborhood. It's primarily all R1 zoning.
Okay.
But there is a range of districts allowed within the low-density comprehensive plan gu... guidance. So this area, as a low-density area in the city, might have the number of districts you see listed here on this column within the neighborhood. So there could be a range of zoning districts that still meet the low-density guidance. So the, the point is just making sure the density range is met with zoning.
Councilor Schack.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in, from the perspective of, as this goes to the Planning Commission, I think it would be helpful in the report and perhaps for the discussion, to have some understanding of what the constraints on the project are that tip it from, say, what would it be, R3 to PUD? I mean, I'm, I'm guessing it's probably setbacks, right? But I, I don't know that. And it would be helpful to have some context and have the Planning Commission have a discussion about that. I mean, I, I'm not as concerned about the public good on this project, but I would like the context.
All right. Councilor Calvert.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I am hoping that the Planning Commission can also sort of explore, sort of along the lines of what Councilmember Schack is, is asking. She's exploring what would tip it from R3 to PUD. And I think that the other part of it is, this is very close to still being within the low-density versus medium-density. It's, it's, it's this close. So what, what tweaks to the project could be made to prevent us from needing a comprehensive guide plan amendment? Because that's a whole other level of change. And, and also, I think it would be helpful for people at the meeting, at the Planning Commission, to have a good understanding of, of what's involved in a comprehensive guide plan change. You know, who's involved, what's involved, what's the timeline, how it differs from a plan that wouldn't involve one that's, that's just a zoning change. Because they're perilously close to low-density, R3, you know, is it, is it, you know, changing the number of units? Is it moving lot lines? You know, what, what is it that, that would get us to just a zoning change, for instance? And, and I think it really is, and I, I think exploring the, the thing about, you know, what's involved in a comprehensive guide plan change is really important. The other thing is that there is a family that lives in the house on, on Inverness that is adjacent to this proposal. And we all know that Viewshed is not a property right, but this is going to be a huge change to a family in that house. And I do want, I think it would be helpful to explore, you know, Viewshed isn't a property right, but what, what sort of protections or buffering might be afforded that family? You know, what is sort of within our code to protect them, to the extent possible, even though it'd be, you know, it's a dramatic change with, with housing that's going to go up right, you know, kind of all around them. So those are, those are mostly the things that I'm hoping that they can explore in the introduction.
Thank you, Councilor Calvert. Are there any other issues that the council would like the Planning Commission to explore on our behalf? Councilor Remaley.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would just like the Planning Commission to look at issues that wasn't clear to me, and maybe it will come forth in the more detailed plan. But, you know, if there's going to be an HOA involved with this, how is ongoing maintenance going to be taken care of if these are twin homes? You know, the roof goes out, things like that. Other things, snow removal, just kind of those nuts and bolts things. How would that be handled in this case in particular? And especially going forward, I know of other Habitat properties in, in Minnetoka that are having some issues now, 20, 25 years on, and would, would want to see a plan of how that would be addressed going forward.
Council, anything else? Otherwise, we've got, we are being asked to introduce this ordinance for consideration by the Planning Commission. Would someone like to make that motion? Councilor Schack.
Thank you, Mayor. I would make the motion to introduce the ordinance rezoning the properties to planned unit development and refer it to the Planning Commission for the public hearing. And I think we're okay approving the notification area.
Very good. Is there a second? Councilor Wilburn?
Second.
All right, got a motion by Councilor Schack and a second by Councilor Wilburn. Ms. England, please call roll.
Foster-Bolt?
Yes.
Schack?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. Item 13 is public hearings, and we've got two of those tonight. 13A is a temporary on-sale liquor license for Immaculate Heart of Mary Church at 13505 Excelsior Boulevard. And Ms. Wischnack, I believe, you're up again.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. This is just a short report. This is a comment request from Immaculate Heart of Mary Church on Excelsior Boulevard. They do have an event, I believe it's in June, and June 15th, to be specific. And it really consists of the location of their east parking lot is where the activities are. There's a map in your packet that kind of shows the layout of what is happening. And then the event will have wine and beer in a separate tent, and they're asking for permission to do that under a temporary liquor license. With that, staff does recommend approval. And Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Council, any questions for Ms. Wischnack? Otherwise, I will open the public hearing, and I will ask if anyone would like to step forward and report on this item. And if so, please state your name and address. I know that we've, you've had this event in the past, so please make a little pitch for this, too.
Okay. Quite an audience tonight compared to previous meetings.
Yeah, we've got a good audience. There's some potential customers here.
Right. My name is Kelly Dennehy. I'm the business administrator at Immaculate Heart of Mary Church. This would be our third annual block party event. And it's a very family-friendly event. It starts with a fun run. We have bingo, a magician act, music in the evening, and food trucks throughout the day, and a lot of other miscellaneous activities throughout the day. So everyone's encouraged to come and join us. It starts at nine, goes until eight in the evening, and that's it.
Very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I will bring it back to the council for consideration. Councilor Schack.
Thank you, Mayor. I just think this looks like a fun event. I'm usually out of town, but I'm pulling for good weather for a successful event. I'll make the motion to grant the license.
All right. Is there a second, Councilor Calvert?
I'll second.
All right. So we've got a motion by Councilor Schack and a second by Councilor Calvert. And, and I just want to comment, you know, I really appreciate our faith community having these events, and I think they enrich our, our community. They build community, and we thank you for all the work that our churches and our synagogues and our mosques do in our community to, to build our faith community and to, and to create community in our city. So with that, Ms. Remaley, would you please call roll? I mean, Ms., Ms. England, would you please call roll? That's, Councilmember Remaley is beside me. I stand corrected. Somebody, somebody will call, somebody, somebody will call roll.
I'll take care of that. Foster-Bolt?
Yes.
Schack?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. All right. We'll move on to the next item now. Thank you so much. Item 13B is a public hearing for an off-sale intoxicating liquor license for Mika LLC, doing business as Strong Liquor &amp; Wine, at 11048 Cedar Lake Road. And Ms. Wischnack, one more time.
One more time. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. This is a little bit longer process. This is for an actual change to an existing liquor license in the city. As you are aware, that requires two hearings, so we'll open the hearing tonight and then wait for all of the background information to be gathered, and then make a final recommendation for you later. Just a note about, the ownership has changed throughout the years in terms of who's owned Strong Liquor. The current company that is asking for permission, Mika LLC, that is a partnership with two people in, in the partnership, and one of them would act as general manager of the store. And at this point, again, there's not much to say other than they've applied, and we'll continue the hearing until May 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wischnack. Any questions, council? Otherwise, I will open the public hearing, and I will ask if anyone would like to comment on that. And if the applicant is here, if they have anything to say, that's great. Otherwise, we will continue the public hearing, and there will be further opportunity to comment. Let's see, we do have, we do have an applicant, the applicant on the phone, and he is, says, if needed, I don't know if he intends to make any comments, but I'm going to take his silence as being, we're, we're good without comments right now, and there will be another opportunity to, to comment when this comes back to us. So with that, we've opened the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to May 6th, 2024? Councilor Calvert.
Thank you, Mayor. I make the motion to continue the public hearing to May 6th, 2024.
Is there a second? Councilor Remaley.
I will second that motion. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. We've got a motion by Councilor Calvert and a second by Councilmember Remaley. Ms. England, please call roll.
Foster-Bolt?
Yes.
Schack?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. Item 14 is other business, and as was stated in our addendum, 14A has been pulled for tonight. Item 15 is appointments and reappointments. We have none of those. So item 16 is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Councilor Calvert.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? Councilor Wilburn?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilor Calvert and a second by Councilor Wilburn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.